Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming to the Protect a School Committee Workshop, yes, workshop session, work session of Thursday, October 26 at 6:00 PM. I asked everyone, no, not yet. Can I correct, call a roll to call the meeting to order?
Ms. Benolo. Mr. Charbonneau. Ms. Fernandez. Mr. Shalow.
Here. May I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda, public participation, we have three people have signed up. May I please have Kate McCoy speak? Thank you.
Thank you, school board. Oh, is this, can everyone hear me fine? Great. Thank you, everyone, for your time. I am a product of Rhode Island education, public education. My name is Kate McCoy, and I am a representative of the Save McCoy Stadium Committee. I'm also a representative of a petition of over 4,000 people. So I believe I have a responsibility to be here and speak on behalf of your community members. I do not want to be looked at as some opposite side or as some enemy. I come to strengthen any plan and to connect and unify any plan with the community. And I hope to open a perspective or open some minds to that end. I have spoken to hundreds of community members personally, and all but five people do not want McCoy Stadium torn down. I've spoken to kids, I have spoken to all types of people of all ages, family members, and they're shocked that this is happening. And, you know, we want to ask that why haven't other sites been considered more thoroughly and other options? I believe with this, we believe with this amount of money, taxpayer money, that other options are looked into thoroughly and that Plan B is made available with such a large project in mind and that possibly with this petition and with, you know, the feelings of the community that we just take a slight pause before demolishing our historic anchor for this community and state and greater region. We just take pause and just make sure that we are well organized and that this is well thought out and that all options have been looked at. There is a true connection to this place. This place matters. It is very important. It, there's a magic of McCoy that can't just be created. I have traveled extensively around the world, and I have visited historic monuments that provide an education that schooling does not provide. People travel to these places, these places of struggles, and they learn something. And by seeing and being amongst these places and seeing that they exist, there is an education there beyond what can be learned in a school. And the community has a true connection to this place. There is great local history here that everyone is proud of. This is not a Christopher Columbus statue. This is a building during the Great Depression. Okay? And I really, truly believe that we need to take pause here, look at the foundations of what's important and what, what we would truly be losing. And I feel like I have a responsibility to say that to all of you. I spoke last night, and the school board was in the hallway for a public comment. There's a lot of people that came forward and spoke about really important things with McCoy Stadium. And so I am here today, and I will be at the next meeting. But please consider holding off demolition, looking at other sites, making sure that we all have it. You know, this is a really big deal. And if you want public support for this project, if you want true unity, destroying a unifying icon for generations is not the foundation to possibly build a unifying high school on, possibly, you know. I, I will take leave. Thank you so much for all of your time. I don't know how much time I took, so thank you so much.
Next up, Mr. Clovis.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, chairman and members of the school committee. Appreciate you giving me a moment here to speak. As you know, yesterday, the city council accorded site control of McCoy Stadium as well as the premises encompassing McCoy Annex, which, as you all know, is a LWCF-assisted site, existing about 17 acres, which is supposed to be protected in perpetuity for the public recreational purposes. And any use, whether it's a change of use, conversion, partial or total, needs to be done in a proper way. And the proper way is obviously to submit an application to the RIDM and NPS regarding what the plans are for the conversions. It should be an opportunity for public comments, including in their environmental impact, environmental assessment, and all these other things. So I understand that I was the lone dissenter over there regarding granting site control to the school committee. So, and the only reason why I feel that way is because everybody's talking about you got to cross the Ts and dot the Is, and the proper process to do this is, as I just outlined. So at the very least, I would suggest to the school committee that maybe it would make sense, before things go any further, that someone contact Joel Lynch. He's the LWCF State and Local Assistance Program Chief. And so at least ask him whether or not the school committee can proceed with doing what they're planning on doing, building without first obtaining the U.S. Secretary of Interiors and the NPS approvals regarding the conversion proposed for the 17 acres, which is what I'm concerned about. I won't speak as to McCoy, even though my personal opinion is that it should be preserved as well or at least incorporated into any designs should the conversion approval be accepted. But that's what I wish to talk about. And also, I just was curious what's happening with Slater Park, the little piece of dirt over there that the people are calling, I don't know if that's supposed to be a playground, but that's where the kids play. It's just dirt. There's nothing there. I'd like to know what's being done in terms of making that to a real playground. The sort of design of the opening that was recently done, I forget which school it was. It looked very nice. I'd like to see something similar like that in that part of town. Those kids deserve access to quality playgrounds like everybody else does in the city. No, I'm not talking about Slater Park. I meant Slater School. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Did I say Slater Park? Okay. No. Yes. That's what I was referencing. I'm sorry. Okay. All right. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, next, I'm so sorry, my head is not here. Amanda, Ms. Amanda? And I already know you have a special request. She's asking that her, you said your husband?
I have comments, and then also, he had comments, but he has a work event, and he could not be here tonight.
Do you mind if she gave her comments and then read her husband's comments?
It's not very, his comments are about a half a page. It's not very long. He can write long statements, but this is not one of them, so.
Which one is going first, Ms.?
I'm going to go first. So I'm coming here from two fronts. One is as a historic preservation nerd. I have a degree in art history, and I believe that there are a lot of things that are worth saving that have historical significance and that when we rush to modernization, we squander our cultural heritage. There are a lot of Gothic cathedrals in France that no longer have stained glass windows because somewhere in the 18th century, white glass became more popular, and so they smashed out all the colored glass and put in white glass. And now we think of the tragic loss, but at the time, they were modernizing and updating. And I, I would like to see more research done on that site before we rush to demolition. Last time I came to this meeting, I heard from, I think it was the person from the architectural firm was saying, "We should hasten demolition because then we'll be ready as soon as the Phase 3 comes through." I'm not so sure about the geotechnical aspect of that. I am really iffy about the idea that we're going to bore far, because we have more research to do on that ground to make sure that it supports a building of that magnitude. And I'm not sure that the final results are going to come through in our favor. That makes me extremely nervous. And what would really make me very sad would be a hole in the ground and nothing to show for it. We lose McCoy, we gain nothing. That would be a tragedy. Moreover, the other part of what I have to talk about is, as an education advocate, Mr. Charbonneau, you and I know each other pretty well. In 2019, I was on the phone with you at least once a week. My son was a student later. His bus was not running on time. He would get to school late. He would be left at school significantly after time. And I've never met you in person. It's so nice to, you know. I understand this is a long day. I see you have your evening coffee. It's, but it's lovely to finally put the face with the voice. I am now a teacher at Shea. As I said, back in the day, I would advocate for any kid, not just my own, and they're all my kids now, right? And I am very much worried that while we are giving a lot of money over to debt service for this new school that may happen in five or maybe more years, because we know that delays always happen in big projects like this. I am worried about the condition of the building that I am in right now. And I understand emergency repairs are being done, but I'm talking about things that are not on the sort of facilities level, but on the just like general maintenance level. We have toilets that run hot every afternoon and drinking fountains that run hot every afternoon, and nobody is addressing it. We have windows that fall off the building if you try to open them. The paint and the plaster are peeling in my room, like just the basic stuff. The kids feel it every day that nobody cares about them. And if we keep them in limbo for years and years, we're going to hemorrhage more kids to places like Davies, other charter schools, whatever. The freshman class at Shea right now this year is 25% smaller than your average class at Shea, and it's because people are just like not seeing a future at that building, right? By the time these kids are out, we're still not going to have that school. I urge people to give more thought to maintenance for the kids at Shea right now. We need to think about the kids that are in that building. We need to consider what they need. I also want to share, my husband wrote an eight-page letter to the council that Steve Alquist is probably going to publish as an op-ed about problems with the unified high school site. One of his great lines was, "East Greenwich has the Odeon, P-Pac is in Providence, the stadium is in Wensoke, and Pawtucket has a Walgreens," right? Like, if we tear down the stadium, our, we have all these theaters that are all in these different places in Rhode Island, and our great theater was torn down. The stadium, the McCoy Stadium, is like another great, beautiful cultural resource. And if we tear it down and we don't have anything to show for it, that would be a great tragedy. And one other thing I wanted to talk to you about also was transportation security. Last night, Lisa Ramsey stood up and told everyone that there would be no problems with busing to a unified high school. I already have students who have trouble with transportation security from Shea who live in Fair Lawn and that, you know, moving the school that much farther away makes it that much harder. They can't stay after for after-school activities. They have no activities bus. They have, they can't stay after to make up tests. They can't come in early. They can't do all the things that kids who can walk to a school can do. And more than half of the student body is currently walking to Shea. And putting a school in that spot in the middle of an industrial park, and it's only near one kind of smallish neighborhood, is not going to help kids who are already from marginalized areas of town. So those are the points that I would like to raise. Some of them have already raised to this committee, but I worry about all of this. If we rush to demolish McCoy and unify the district, I think it might greatly underserve our already underserved populations. So my husband's comment is, "I would like to address comments made last night city council meeting, and since the school committee now has site control, this seems like the appropriate venue. First, it has been reported in the press that the project team has been meeting with the Soloveev Group to retain McCoy Stadium and develop the unified high school on the site together. Jonathan Levy recommended to the council that although no formal design exercises have been started, he thought the combination of the two were infeasible due to the stadium having to also accommodate football, the schedule of a professional team conflicting with high school practices and safety and security concerns. Anyone who has lived there for a few decades knows that the Tolman-St. Ray's Thanksgiving football game was an annual tradition at McCoy. A dual-purpose facility is absolutely feasible, as McCoy already is one. As far as scheduling, summer collegiate teams like the Newport Gulls only play in July and August, and many collegiate teams in New England do play at high school facilities, including the Ocean State Waves. A league with a longer season, like the Frontier League expansion team coming to Brockton next year, which plays from late May to early September, could play early and late games on the road to avoid conflicts with high school sports. Furthermore, Mr. Levy's suggestion to incorporate the off-the-shelf metal bleachers installed at McCoy in 1999 into the school's playing fields to honor McCoy is an insult to both the thousands of people who support saving McCoy Stadium and to the future students of the unified high school who would be given architecturally insignificant 25-year-old equipment." So to clarify, they said last night, you know, Councilwoman Stokoviac said, "Could you preserve some elements of the architecture of McCoy?" And Jonathan Levy was like, "Well, we have these bleachers." And they're not like, they're not old. They're 25 years old. They're not particularly beautiful or ornate or of another era. And basically, they're saying, "Oh, we'll give you those bleachers, and that'll preserve the heritage of McCoy." And really, it's just, you know, it's nice that we repurpose old things, but it's not like nice old things. It's not the good old stuff. It's just the used old stuff, and it's, it's the worst of both worlds, kind of. Additionally, I would like to reiterate that investing in a critical life safety, sorry. I would like to reiterate that investing in critical life safety upgrades at Shea still does not address deficiencies that impact performance and enrollment at Shea, and making the student community wait five years to address these deficiencies is unacceptable. One counselor mentioned that she's excited that her first grader will someday attend the new unified high school. I am sure that parents of 7th and 8th graders faced with their children spending their entire high school careers in substandard conditions, in a building they voted for and were promised would be renovated in time for the 2023 school year, feel very differently. And, you know, we did bond more money to renovate Shea and Tolman. I feel like, you know, we are required to keep Shea as a school. It's going to be part of Pawtucket, you know, forever. We're this part of our covenant in the language of the deed. We could be doing some work on Shea. The classes are shrinking. We could put those kids into swing space. We own more buildings than we owned in 2019. We own the Apex Building now. You know, we have the St. Leo's Building. We have other places. We could put those kids into swing space and do more renovations at Shea. They deserve it. They deserve it faster than five, seven, whatever, years in the future. So, thank you.
Anyone else for public participation? Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is presentations. Ms. Benolo, Building Futures? Or Jared?
I am here along with Andrew Cortez from Building Futures, who is going to give a brief explanation of the role of Building Futures and how it's working with the PLA in Baldwin and what we do throughout the district. So I'll turn it over to him.
Happy to do it. Thank you, everybody, for your time. As mentioned, I'm Andrew Cortez. I'm the executive director and founder of Building Futures. We're a community-based nonprofit that serves underrepresented populations looking to get careers in construction. And it's from that context that I speak to our role within the project labor agreement. As you know, a project labor agreement is exactly what it says. It's an agreement about the labor for the project. One of the appendix in that project labor agreement is related to how we train the next generation of workforce on this actual construction project. So it requires that 15% of the labor hours by every tier of contractor be performed by apprentices. And if that contractor did not have enough incumbent apprentices to fulfill the 15% requirement, then they draw from our community-based program so that somebody from an underrepresented population gets an opportunity to move into a career in construction. We serve Pawtucket residents, and we would try to identify Pawtucket residents to answer the call for construction on the Pawtucket School Project. So that's our role specifically within the project labor agreement. The other aspect of that is we monitor the actual construction work as it happens. We receive monthly reports from every single contractor of every tier so we can produce a report at any given point, but we do it once a month, which shows you the progress that each contractor is making towards their goal of 15% apprenticeship utilization. That happens through an online portal system that we maintain, and we track, and we produce those reports so that as the construction managers are looking at performance, where there might be an opportunity to start a new Pawtucket resident into a career in construction, we're all on track in terms of working together to make that happen. So this all happens with registered apprenticeship programs and Pawtucket residents who are entering registered apprenticeships, which happen for all of the different construction trades. I love talking about Building Futures, and I could do it all night. I was warned not to. So I left you a packet of information, just one, to keep everybody hungry for more information, right? So we have lots of information about our programming and what we do, but I'd be happy to answer any questions specific to our role within the school construction. Please.
Thank you for coming, and I was very happy that we were going to have an apprenticeship program at Baldwin. You said that 15% of the hours had to be done by apprentices, but you also alluded that they did not have to be Pawtucket apprentices. They were just apprentices. And that if they were short in the labor field, then they would fill those with apprenticeships through Pawtucket students or?
So they would draw Pawtucket residents directly from our pre-apprenticeship program.
Okay, so what is your pre-apprenticeship program?
Our pre-apprenticeship program trains community residents for entry into one of 13 different building trade union apprenticeship programs. We have a direct entry agreement which facilitates their entry. So registered apprenticeship are required, if you're accepting new applicants, to post a public notice of that. Because we serve underrepresented populations, we have a direct entry agreement which allows us to place a Pawtucket resident from our program into an apprenticeship to be dispatched to that work at any point regardless of application period.
So how many Pawtucket residents do you have in your pre-apprenticeship program?
I should run the numbers. I don't want to misspeak, but I will tell you that Providence is our largest demographic. Pawtucket is our second demographic. I can send you the statistics afterward. We've placed a little over 400 community residents into these trade apprenticeship programs over the years. I'm very proud to say that 80% of our graduates are BIPOC individuals. 10% of our graduates are female. 42% of our graduates are formerly incarcerated. Over 50% are justice-involved, but we've had less than 3% recidivism, which goes to prove that when you provide somebody who needs an economic opportunity, the ability to make a family sustaining wage and benefits, they don't reavend. So we're very proud of our numbers. I will give you the exact figures on the amount of Pawtucket residents that we have placed and also the ones that we are currently training. We run our cycles three times a year, and we are also running a youth program. So actually, we did a lot of tree planting with our young adults recently in Pawtucket. That's a program that we enjoy, and it serves as a feeder to our primary pre-apprenticeship program. I have some information. There's a lot of different programs we do, but the core one to focus on here is our pre-apprenticeship program, which has a five-week hands-on training opportunity that leads to direct placement into a union apprenticeship position. So to your earlier point, yes, any apprentice can fill that requirement because we don't want to displace an existing worker. But if there's a new opportunity being created because the school is being constructed, we want to make sure that goes to a Pawtucket resident who needs that opportunity.
So what is the option, excuse me, what is the possibility that no new employees apprenticeship?
I've not seen that in 15 years, so.
What is the age of the pre-apprenticeship program?
How long have we been running it? Or the average age of the participants? So typically, it's around 29. However, with our young adult program, that is going down. So we also have a program that we work with existing high schools to help them integrate in construction career awareness into a program of study. We'd be happy to do that for Pawtucket. That leads to a national certification, which a Pawtucket resident could take anywhere in the country and apply to any apprenticeship program in any union environment, no matter where they are. So that's a really powerful partnership as well.
So when we were talking about that, and I believe Gordon, they had, they spoke at Tolman and talked to some kids. So I think that's the part that I want to see. That's the part that we have been trying to get established so that our students will have a trade should they choose to be part of that program. Now, how does that work?
I'll give you an example. I actually just left one of our graduate development courses, our graduates who have completed their apprenticeship and have actually started their own businesses. One of those graduates tonight, I noted, was from the Providence Career Technical Academy originally. So he worked in an electrical program of study. We integrated the multi-craft core curriculum within that electrical program. When that individual graduated, they came straight to our community program, and we accepted them because of our relationship. That person then went on to complete a five-year, 10,000-hour IBW electrical apprenticeship program and now runs his own MBE business for himself. That's exactly the type of relationship we're looking to have with Pawtucket Schools, inspiring the young adults in the classes to consider construction careers, giving them the information to make an informed decision, preparing them through pre-apprenticeship, and then allowing them to gain gainful employment through registered apprenticeship.
Okay, so that is the part that we are interested in, in taking care of our students. Can you send us an electronic copy of your program? I do want to run it through Legal, which would be Dylan Conley and Mr. Conley. We also want to run it through the superintendent's office. But I would like to see, you know, we had talked that we would have students possibly employed during the summer. That's coming up. So that would be graduate students. That could be, you know, a senior from high school. This is what I was looking for.
I see. So all registered apprentices must be 18 years old and have already graduated high school. But what we can do is provide field trips to our pre-apprenticeship program. And there's a lot of programmatic partnerships we can establish. Again, I won't bore you with all of the materials that's here. But within this, this is one of the documents we produce for schools. It explains all of the different building trades career paths, why people might want to consider it, where they can go, how to get into any of the unions, the multi-craft core curriculum I was mentioning. So I'll leave this here, but I'll send it all electronically as well. We've also included some program impact statements, so it just gives you a sense of who we serve, what our success rates have been, and I'm very proud that our graduates stay connected with us. Over this 15-year span, I can tell you that 80% of all the people we have ever placed are still within the industry today.
Okay, so we have your information to speak further with you and Shawn to make sure we have?
If I may, I can also, the program, we have, we've employed probably maybe half a dozen to 10 individuals that went through this program that currently work for Shawn in the laborers' union. So they do, they do participate. The tricky thing is, I know you're trying to put streams to work. They have to be 18. They have to have an education. What I want to go out there, like we did at Tolman, we did at Shea last year, is explain the opportunities and, you know, we can team up with Andrew and talk to him again. We're actually setting that up now with the two high schools, and doing it in other districts as well. We just need to educate them and let them know the opportunities that they have, but they need to get a high school education or GED to get into that program. We can't put anybody under 18 on the job site to work in the summer, fortunately. But we can do plenty of field trips. We can educate them on the site, and I'm working with the school department now to bring them over to Baldwin, show them the concrete, show them the foundation, show them the steel when we start erecting the steel, and getting some interest. So I thought the two presentations we did last year were very, very good. Looking to do it again more than once this year and just kind of get them. My niece's son just graduated an apprenticeship and went to Tolman. He graduated an electrical apprenticeship, and now he's an electrician. He's in the IBW. He's in the IBW union, so it does work. We just need to educate them, get them, get them all involved. And this is a great opportunity. And I'm happy, because it used to only be Providence, right?
It was, but you know, it's, we've grown statewide in terms of our impact. We primarily draw from the urban core cities. You know, the one thing that I will say is that 100% of our participants were low-income at program entry. And I can't say that about our graduates. We offer first-time homebuyer classes for our graduates and that's the power, the transformative power of a registered apprenticeship model, to give somebody a career. And we want to make sure that we extend that to the maximum extent to Pawtucket residents. And I will say that even before somebody can enter a registered apprenticeship program, we could engage them in our young adult program, Building Green Futures, where we help young adults prepare for pre-apprenticeship while doing environmentally impactful projects throughout the city. We look at tree equity scores and we try to reduce some of the social determinants of health hazards that are out there in our communities. So lots of ways to engage. I look forward to following up.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next item for presentations, Hersh, district student discipline data.
What we wanted to present tonight was a snapshot of where we are this year in comparison to the previous years with regards to discipline. So what you're seeing up here is year-to-date. And this was as of October 20th, that we want to make sure we prepared it for the school committee. What you'll see on the chart there, the blue lines are last year's suspensions. So these are out-of-school suspensions by school throughout the district. And to, when I say year-to-date, that was from the first day of school to the October 20th date. At this time, we had 171 suspensions. This year's numbers, what you'll see there is in the orange, that you'll notice the year-to-date, we have a 66 suspensions, out-of-school suspensions. So there is a drop in the suspensions for about 60% drop in the suspensions. And what I'm going to show you is also a month-by-month, but as you can see by the graph there, some of the schools have a pretty large drop in suspensions from golf, like a 70% drop in suspensions, Jinx is like a 35%, and Shea, there's like an 85% drop in suspensions. The next, sorry, a little difficult going around that. But what I did, what I did here was to break up the suspensions from the, you know, sometimes you see that bubbles that happen at certain times in the year. So what you're seeing here is the August and September suspensions. And I just kind of made a little visual there so you can see the, where the schools were having some of these major drops in suspensions throughout the year. This is a subset of the larger part of data that I just showed you, where we were looking at the 171 versus the 66 suspensions. And the last one, now when I elaborate a little bit, once I show the last graph, is the October data. And so the October data, once again, this isn't a full-month completion of data because, you know, we, we grabbed it on October the 20th and, but you'll see there's also a decline in suspensions there. The, the decline and, is, is a good thing. You know, it's, it doesn't just happen by, by accident. You know, the, the decline that you're seeing here in the suspensions is through a lot of, you know, looking at the data, seeing what's there, talking about the data, looking at ways that we can improve and help the schools. Every week, the suspension data, the superintendent and I look at the suspension data and we go over it. If there's questions that we have, we, we reach out to the schools to ask the questions. The principals make sure that suspensions are being also, if they're being handed out, they're being handed out in a fair way and also that, make sure that the offenses that is happening there are suspendable offenses. And how can we address the, the suspensions as a whole? Obviously, we'd like to see no suspensions at all, you know, but we're, we're working towards improving that suspension data. We just wanted to give you a kind of a snapshot of where we are. If you remember, in the previous years, we would give you kind of like a monthly suspension where we are today. And we just felt it was a, a good way to explain it for you. And I'll take any questions that anybody may have.
Joey?
So last year, we used to get incident reports. So anything that happened in any of the schools, we were notified that led to suspensions or?
Yeah, we did.
Which we don't get anymore. So what has happened that has changed the behavior so drastically from what was to what is, what is being presented? How has that been accomplished? And do we have in-school suspensions?
There are some in-school suspensions. I didn't include this on the slide. At this point, there had been five last year and, but there were none to date. So looking at the data, there were no in-school suspensions to date. I'm not exactly sure about the incident report. I know that didn't come from, from me. I'm not sure where you may have been getting those incident reports. But I do want to elaborate on one of the questions, like, like you said, okay, what are we doing? So a lot of it is that communication, talking to the principals, talking to the buildings. Also, there's programs that have been in place, like Boyce Town throughout our district that has also helped, you know, to manage, you know, student behavior. And we hope to, you know, continue that, programs like that that can help the school with managing suspensions.
Martha? I was just going to say, I don't remember getting, getting reports on when there were suspensions, but we did receive, we did receive reports on any like critical incident, like if the police were, if the police were involved in something, if there was like a major fight, like if, can't remember, like things like that, we would get, we would, but not for the suspens, I never remember getting them for suspensions. But those other, like those big incidents, we would, we definitely did get them, but not for, not for suspensions.
Anything else for Hersh? Any other comment? Hersh, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
All right, can I get a, I can get a motion to approve the previous minutes meetings, no, meetings, minutes, from June 6, 2023, June 13, 2023, August 24, 2023, and September 14, 2023? Motion by Ms. Manolo, seconded by, by Mr. Chabino. Discussion? Any comments? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Under all business, first item up is the Shea renovation status update. Mr. Chabino asked for it. Mr. Chabino, do you have any questions first before the team adjusts?
No, I'll wait for the team to provide the update.
So similar to the previous discussions about Shea with the $10 million NEAS funds that were approved, the two primary projects that Colliers is going after right now is the Shea roof replacement project and the Shea fire code upgrades. So at the last school committee meeting, I presented the Shea fire code schematic designs to be submitted to RIDE. That got approved and we are continuing towards design development. And actually, at this presentation, shortly after this, at the school committee meeting, I have the Shea High School Roof Replacement Schematic Designs approval to submit to RIDE. So at this moment, we are still on schedule for summer work for both of those projects and we are moving right along on schedule for those.
Discussion, Mr. Chabino. Oh, you got more?
There, there were, sorry.
I'm just interested in, in how the work we're doing right now overlaps with the plan that we, we got back in January and where we are relative to the spend. So I, I get that we've got a schematic design out for fire safety, we've, we're going to approve a roof replacement, but we were presented a plan back in January to spend down the $10 million. So how does this fit in and are we on track to the plan that we agreed to in January?
I, I'm not, regarding the plan in January, that's the NEAS letter that had the phase one, phase two, I just want to make sure I was referencing the correct plan. Everything in that phase one, $10 million, we have either accomplished through John Cody facilities or in the process of accomplishing through Jensen Hughes and BTGA's drawings that are planning for this summer's construction. So everything on phase one is included in either work that we are currently designing or work that has been done.
Can we be a little bit more specific? What's been done of phase one and what's left to be done?
Part of phase one also mentioned railings in the building. Every railing from the building, they only identified one. Every railing in the building has been replaced and is up to date into fire code. We took care of the roof repairs, which opens up the auditorium minus from the stage so that the students can now use that area. That was one big part of it. We ended up taking care of the backstage area where they had, had made comments about additional lighting. I've also reached out to the state, which I applied for another application because we're in phase two of our lighting upgrades throughout the district. We never put Shea or Toman on that because at the time, we didn't believe we were going to be in there. They're all, they're now considering doing complete LED upgrade in Shea also. That was part of the NEAS letter, but it was only part of it like slightly. They mentioned the corridors being kind of dark. So that's something that I'm hoping to be able to get that would be free to the district other than possible change orders. And the big ticket items would be, what Jared had said, would be the, the roof replacement itself, the deck and the fire suppression system.
Do we have a number that we've, that we've spent of that $10 million? Because it sounds like we've done quite a few projects over there relative to the?
I think Colliers could get you that because they do have the life safety that we did over the springtime, currently designed fees going towards the roof and, and actually for fire suppression. I think they could get you those numbers and you could get a good idea of what we spent to date and what they believe estimated is going to cost for the roof when they get done with the design.
Relative to the, some of the cosmetics inside the building? Are we, see, I'm looking for what we've spent, the city committed $10 million to it. So are we going to come out at eight and a half million to where we should be looking at doing some more work or do we not?
So I think that we're, that's a good, that's a good question because we're at the juncture now that we're going to have the pricing for the roof and the life safety and the encumbrances thereof as compared to what we've spent thus far. So if there's more in terms of cosmetic that we can put toward that, yes. So we're at a very good point. So to, after tonight, we will work with Mr. Focio to get that exact number of what is spent as relates to what has been encumbered or what will be done for the summer and then we can address some of those cosmetic issues, yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions on Shea roof, roof update, renovation status? Any? Here and then, next item, unified high school status update. Again, Mr. Chabino put it on, but can we get an update from the team?
The only update that I have is that we last night received site control from the city council. We have also met with the Solivive organization and we talked about the reality of putting a stadium on the site and what their plans were versus our plans and how that relates to one another. That would be all the update that we have. We're still in the stage two submission and RIDE is, we just actually today got back some preliminary information, requests for more information from the stage two, and we sent that off to Jonathan and Holly and all the people that are going to be able to answer that. That just came today, like late this afternoon.
Well, go ahead, Mr. Chabino first.
A couple of things, excuse me, relative to the site control. I think, you know, that was clearly, well, it was the missing document from our stage two. So it, it's good that the council has moved and we've submitted now all the documentation required. But I think we ought, ought to start thinking quickly about how we're going to run some of these things simultaneously because Jared, correct me if I'm wrong, but upon stage two approval, the clock starts ticking, right?
Correct, yes, which typically comes in the December, so in a couple months from now.
So if we have a five-year window, so there was a lot of talk last night about reimbursements and bonus points and so forth. But if, if we have a five-year window to get the building designed, to get it built and opened, now that we have site control, should we not be looking to go out? Because we're going to need a project management firm, we're going to need a CMAR, we're going to need an architect. All of those bidding processes are going to take time. Should we not be looking to do that, like next week, convene a meeting and, and start that process?
It's 100% the time to go out and write an RFP for an OPM. And that would be the first step and then we move on to the, the other pieces, the stage three and beyond.
So do we have, we'll have plans in place to address the, okay.
OPM and architect first.
Right, well, I, I think, I think prior to, we can go out to RFP for OPM, we can go out to RFP for architect and, and construction manager at risk. But if we're not sitting with the city finance department and Anthony's sitting with the city finances to say they're going to ban X amount of dollars, I mean, we can't start entering into contracts without any money to draw on. I would suspect an architect, a construction management firm, an OPM is going to look at, okay, we've been awarded the project, we need X amount of dollars upfront.
And to the upfront part, it would only happen once they do the work. So when you award to an OPM or an architect or a contractor, there's not typically a, hey, we need a start fee. It's, it's, we are going to start this project, but then a month later, we'll start billing as well for the work that we performed. So yes, it is, it is also time to start talking with the city about the banning and the bonding.
Okay, so, and that's what I'm saying about multiple things trying to happen simultaneously. I, I think it's important that we schedule a meeting with the city and their finance team with ours and then simultaneously, we're preparing the RFP and so forth. The last thing we want to do is jeopardize bonus points of, you know, potentially up to eight and a half, 9% because we didn't finish the project in time or whatever. I, I think, you know, site control was a, was the final piece of the submission. I think we need to get moving now, though.
Correct. Site control was a huge win last night and we've already calendared a meeting with the superintendent, Colliers, Mr. Cody and Mr. Focio so we can wrap our heads around our next steps on internal meeting and then going out. And the city did ask for that collaborative piece. So once we do that internal piece, we're already moving on that.
We're kept abreast of those meetings getting scheduled and when they are and, and the results of them?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you very much. And so those, those 17 acres that are protected, is that, and have we looked into that? I feel like we're, we're going through, you know, I'm just wondering if we're going through all this stuff and then if we don't get permission to do that or is that an issue at all? Being new to the?
Mr. Conley had a conversation with, you, you actually addressed this with the city council, two meetings in a row now. I don't remember the number 17 acres coming up at each meeting. This was the first item, is that big? Can you speak upon that right now? Because that is a great question and I liked your answer, yes, that it, it's a city issue.
So I think there's been a little bit of confusion about, you know, what the, what the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, for lack of, for lack of a better word, encumbrance means. So the site really was the subject of two of those grants and the, the annex being one of them and where the field is as a, as a, as a, another site that's subject to the grant. The conversion process requires the city to apply through the Department of Environmental Management who administers the program locally. Management, who administers the program locally, on behalf of the National Park Service, who administers the program on behalf of the Department of Interior. And the, the city has begun that process. We know that at the initial stages of that, they reached out to us to inform us that they had started that process, and we also, as a consequence of that, had the opportunity to inform the Rhode Island Department of Education as part of the Stage Two process, and we had our conversations with them. We were fortunate to learn in that discussion that Ride was already aware of it, because the DEM had purposely and very intentionally scheduled a time to explain to Ride what that process is, and because it just wasn't our site. And it's a, it's a, an issue for cities and towns that are going through this process throughout the state. I can't tell you exactly what are the cities and towns, but the reason that the DEM reached out to Ride to explain to them what this program is, is because other cities and towns would be coming before them, looking for site control, just as we are. So it's really the responsibility of the city, it's allergies, this, this weather has caused a blossoming of ragweed, and this is what it does to my voice, I apologize. So the, the process does require the, the city to institute that process with DEM, to the National Park Service, to the Department of Interior. It will require the city to satisfy that conversion process. But that does not, that does not create an impediment for site control. We now have site control of the premises for care custody control that allows us to go forward with our project on that site. There's, as far as we're concerned, it's up to the city to meet its obligations in that conversion process, and that will allow us to go forward with our project on that site.
And Bill, if you can add, educated, I apologize, your colleague on the city side, who's the lawyer for...
Frank, Miles.
All right, hopefully he's not watching tonight. You guys were in agreement with that, am I correct?
Yes, we are, yes.
And you're not supposed to, and you guys agreed, this is a city thing. We're going to build our school, City Hall, take care and find seven, well, it wasn't 17 acres, but that, that is what was said in front of the city council, that the two lawyers that were supposed to oppose each other agree, it's a city side, and go find the, it was a lot less than 17 acres.
But, and Ride, and in terms of the Stage Two submission, now that we have the site control, Ride's fully aware, and the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant program and the obligations of the city under that grant program are not going to be an impediment to Ride accepting site control for the premises.
Any other discussion, Unified High School for an update? I think it was a great win, the great job by the team. I said this several times, the team did a great job of getting the confidence, the city council gave us site control. We're not even behind the eight ball anymore, right? We're, we're good, we're on time. But to Mr. Chavino's point, I mean, we're not taking a victory lap, we're going to sit down and actually get this going. All right. Anything else? All right, thank you guys very much. Next item, we're doing new business discussion, approve, can I get a motion? Oh, go ahead, sorry. Oh, I apologize. On the old business, it's an IT RFP status update. Hersh, I apologize.
That's okay. So let me, I want to go over a little bit of a timeline since our September 12th meeting. At the September 12th meeting, we had discussed the IT audit, and I established a timeline to go out for another RFP for a request for pricing. So we did place a ad in the Providence Journal Bulletin, that RFP was placed in the Providence Journal Bulletin on the September 20th, and we ran that for seven days. Okay, so we ran that in the Providence Journal Bulletin. We also used the RFP board, RFP School Watch, which I think is something that we probably should use in, in the future, because it's very easy to do and get companies to, to see RFPs that we have out there. It's a board where a lot of these vendors look at it every single day and, and look at what's out there. But so the, it ran in, in our people as well as the ProJo for seven days. The RFP closed on October the 20th, and we had to do the opening on October the 23rd at 9:00 AM. There were three vendors that reached out for copies of the performance audit. There was one company that was local, one company that was out of Quebec, and one company that's out of Connecticut for it. Unfortunately, none of them submitted bids. So what I did was, because they didn't submit a bid, I reached out to the companies myself just to ask that they had inquired, but they hadn't submitted, was there a reason for it? So I did, I was able to contact the local company, which is actually a company that we've used in the past to do some work when we've needed to roll out extra Chromebooks and things like that, they're out of Providence. And then I also talked to the company out of Connecticut. I was able, I wasn't able to talk to the one out of Quebec. I, I did call and I didn't get a message returned back. So, so I just kind of asked them, you know, some of the reasoning, you know, you asked for the bid, you submitted a bid, but you didn't, unfortunately, you didn't submit, you know, a proposal. And what I got back was, as a response, was that the bid itself, the request for proposal was a very large bid. There's a lot of things that were there that they wouldn't be able to bid on, because a lot of them are kind of given suggestions for one topic or another. It was very overwhelming for them to do. So unfortunately, I don't have, I don't know whether the committee wants me to move forward on this, because we've said it out a couple of times, but that's where, that's where we stand with that. Like I said, I didn't put it in, in the ProJo. We did pay for that for seven days, and also in the, the good thing was the RFP School Watch was a free, two of them came from that bid board. The RFP School Watch, the local vendor read it in the, in the ProJo, and I spoke to him.
Hersh, any comments or questions on it? Is this, why? Why is no, is this happening to all the districts? Are other districts asking for it? Is this such a specific specialty that...
It's, so the one out of Connecticut that I spoke quite a length, actually, very, very nice she put me on to the president of the company, because I said, okay, if it were, if we were to open it again, is there some question? And they said it was, it was very broad. So one of the things that they deal with, it was things such as, you know, cybersecurity and things, which some companies we already work with. I did ask, out of curiosity, I said I wouldn't hold them to, to anything, you know, a price and stuff like, but out of curiosity, what does, what does something like this go for? And after, you know, speaking with her going forward, she said it'd probably be somewhere between 70, 80,000 or more, looking at the, the, basically, she'd have to dissect each of the, the things, but it's really not something that they do, because it's kind of like, just the networking piece alone that we have in there as far as going through there. Like, we, we do have a company that we work with right now, where we're in the midst of replacing 50-plus switches that the committee had approved, that we had gotten for E-Rate. So right now, we just replaced this week, a bunch of our schools, and, and that goes in that, that company, basically, when we're working with them, is just the switching, the V-LANs, all of the, the configurations we have on those switches, which we tend to do, all of that on our own, except for a big project like that, when it's an E-Rate project, that we're able to, you know, mass replace switches, because we're going into every one of our closets and pulling out all the, the equipment there, pulling out all the cables, pulling out everything, plugging it all back in, and at the end, you know, making sure that the next day, we just did Potter today, like just, just ended about an hour and a half ago with that configuration. And yesterday, we know, we're doing each of the elementary schools. But it's basically about, you know, if we break it down as far as, you know, in order on this particular aspect, or this particular aspect, we might be a little bit more able to get, you know, the bids. But it's kind of a multi-factor thing that we're asking there.
Any other discussion for the update?
Just an update.
No, we have an action item if you want.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, even put it on for another meeting, maybe we can look at the scope of the, the update or what have you. I, I did, just while Hersh is up there, want to make a, a comment if I, if I could, Mr. Chairman. There was an occasion, I, I'm not sure if it was the RFP for the IT audit, or if it was the SkyPath issue, but at a meeting, I let my frustration boil over, and Hersh happened to be the one presenting at the time. And it came out that my frustration over the delays was, was directed at Hersh. I have since been able to have a private conversation with Hersh, you know, a day after that meeting, but it was a public, it was a public frustration, and I felt that, you know, I've known Hersh for years, he deserved a public apology, this was the first time we've been at a meeting together, and I offer you that public apology, Hersh.
Thank you, Mr. Chavino, I appreciate it.
Nice hack, Jay, that's good. We, we all get heated though sometimes, so, but that's classy.
Well, sometimes.
It's all good.
All right, with nothing else, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Now, under new business discussion action item, can I get approval for a motion to submit to Ride Shea Roof Replacement Design Drawings? First presentation by the team, Mr. Grant, go ahead. Motion to approve, seconded by, by Ms., motion by Ms. Benolo, seconded by Mr. Chavino. Discussion?
Yeah, so...
Go ahead, Mr. Chavino.
I was, I was just going to say, before you and your packets, oh, sorry, before you and your packets is the schematic design drawings for the Shea High School Roof Replacement Project. This is our request to submit to Ride. Per the standard procedures of Ride, we submit schematic design, design development, and then 60% construction documents. So if there are any questions on the drawings presented, we presented this to the facility subcommittee, and I can have Joanne speak to that if she'd like to as well.
Presented and approved unanimously.
It's, it's this, all this...
I've said it's all of it.
The, the entire, every roof, so not just the, the black portion or the ballasted, it's every piece of roof, every coping along the edge.
And all of these little flutes, vents, drains...
All of those will get re-flashed. There are some areas that may need to get raised, depending. For instance, we will be increasing the insulation in some areas that has older, small insulation or some, in some cases, no insulation, and we'll be building it up to get it up to code. And in some of those areas, you'll need to raise some vent stacks. There may be a chance you need to raise some mechanical units up a little bit as well. There is a flashing where you have your brick wall and your CMU wall, it allows for a cavity behind for water to get in and come out the flashing, that'll have to get raised in order to raise the roof as well. So yes, everything encompassing all of the roofs, including the lower ones that are not visible from the aerial view.
Ms. Benolo, go ahead.
So one of the things that we discussed at the other meeting were the windows on the upper portion of the roofs, and they'll probably go in as an ad alternate, after they review them and the skylight.
Yeah, so there may be a possibility for a multiple ad alternates, but the, the architects are onsite, they're actually there today, and they're going to be there tomorrow, they've been a couple of times already, including taking the photos and doing their investigation. They will make recommendations to us as we progress along in this design on if these windows should be replaced or recocked, or what their recommendations are. It does look like they're in very old condition, so I assume we'll get a recommendation to replace. I know they've also pointed out that the facility subcommittee asked about roof drains and making sure we have an adequate amount and that they're not clogged. So they always include scoping of the roof drains, and in this case, they actually have pointed out a few that are on the exterior of the building that they recommend to replace, because they could see some leaking in one of the areas. So there are roof drains that we will be replacing, the roof drain bowls. In certain areas, we will need to extend that into the actual drain leader, the PVC pipe that, that leads away. So it'll be all encompassing. Included in this, that we are hoping to be able to include as an ad alternate, is the capstone, the cast stone cap around the edge of the building that got removed as a, a measure back in December due to safety issues. We are hoping, we, we have taken those, we have documentation of them, and we have some of them stored, one of each style stored at a facility by the mason that took them off before, and we are hoping to be able to include that in the project to reinstall new capstones.
Mr. Cody, can you talk about your wish list for the hallways?
There's, there's two back stairwells towards the back of the building that over the years, the roofs over there have, have exceeded their life expectancy, but they can only get to them from a boom, but over the years, they've really taken a toll on those back stairwells. I also asked Colliers to kind of try and look about, to see if we could possibly add this to it as an, as an ad alternate, to redo these stairwells so they can open up and they can look brand new.
Discussion on the approval to submit to Ride? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Benolo, yes. Mr. Chavino.
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Shalow.
Yes, thank you very much. Can I have a motion to send the recommendation to award Cunningham and Curtis Elementary School Playground Design Services? Motion by Mr. Chavino, seconded by Ms. Benolo. Discussion? Do you want to tell us...
We have in your packet this evening, a proposal based on Colliers' project leaders' evaluation for the scope for your review. It is recommended that Colliers awards the RTA to Gardner and Garrish for $68,290 for Curvin and Curtis' design. Yes.
Not to be that guy, did you just say Curvis? Yeah, Curtis and Curvin?
I didn't, I said...
Did you say Cunningham?
Curtis and Cunningham.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Yeah, we're going to read too, no worries. Curtis and Cunningham.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Benolo.
Yes.
Mr. Chavino.
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Shalow.
Yes, thank you. See, appointment of Wellness Subcommittee Chair, I'm asking for approval to name Ms. Benolo and Ms. Dubey as co-chairs of the Wellness Subcommittee, with Ms. Marsha Fernandez as a member of the Wellness Subcommittee. Motion by Mr. Chavino, seconded by Ms. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, clerk, please call, all those in favor?
Aye.
All of the opposed? All right, thank you all very much for that. School bus transportation, Ms. Ramsey. And I'm not being rude, I'm being asked by a member who's not here, Deputy Chair Grant cannot make it tonight, but she does ask that I bring up a concern that she had, but do you want me to read the concern for, oh, Marsha, do you know it?
No, I, I have my own concern, I don't know what...
Gotcha, understand.
Yep, so, and I, we've kind of talked a little bit about it, and I, I think it's been addressed, but, so my concern is that the kids that are coming from our district, specifically the kids in foster care, because those are the kids that I find out about, they're late to school, they get, you know, statewide transportation provides their transportation, and they're late to school every day. One girl I just found out has been to school late every day from the beginning of the year until like last week. And so my concern is, and I understand that, I, I know the specifics of getting, you know, it's difficult, right, because they have new kids coming and going, so they have to juggle things around. But my concern is, why were, why was nobody alerted to the fact that this kid is late to school every day and someone, you know, and kind of helped to fix the problem prior to like me finding out about it? kind of helped to fix the problem prior to, like, me finding out about it? Um, and so that was one of the things that I, you know, that I had brought up to the superintendent, um, and I just, I, that's just not okay, we gotta do better, these kids, um, are already forgotten in so many areas, like, somebody needs to be looking out for that and reporting that stuff, um, immediately, um, and I know it takes time, I've had my own bus issues with my own kid, um, and my foster kids, and I know it takes time, but it's not okay that a kid was late for two, two months, and we didn't catch it. Um, and I'm sure she's not the only one, you know, so, I'm just wondering, and I, and I know state, you know, one of you just handles the statewide stuff, somebody does that in district, like, if you could just, that's my issue, um, I know that, um, Ms. Bryant had another transportation issue, but that's nice.
So, I think that they may be related in some way, in terms of procedure for late students arriving to school on a bus, and I agree with you, it's not okay, kids should not be coming to school that late, and statewide poses its own little difference than the ones that we contract with, because we're a little bit at the mercy of the statewide transportation routing system. However, we do have a direct line to the executive director, and we do follow through. So, the fact that you brought that to attention definitely shined a light a little bit more on what's happening with statewide, but we do follow the same similar procedure as we would in our in-district busing, and we contact, the school contacts us, and we go out to statewide. So, and statewide usually heeds our expectations, sometimes they, they cannot, but coming to school, and I think in that situation, the student was coming a half an hour late, and that's not okay, you're missing way too much school, and it's causing way too much anxiety. So, I do believe it's been remedied.
I think the difference though between the, the two is, um, you know, a kid who lives in district, or, you know, goes to school out of district, but lives at home with their parent, their parent is aware of what's going on, like, these kids, you know, they're with, you know, you know, caregivers temporarily, they, some of them don't know that it's, they're not getting to school on time, some of them are on buses for a really long time, which can't be avoided sometimes, right, for them to get to school on time, but, um-
You're right.
So, it's different, like-
Mrs. Fernandez, you're a hundred percent right.
So, I don't like to clump, I, 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 you know, I, I, yes, it's similar, but I don't want to clump them together, we're talking about two different kids-
Correct.
Kids who have somebody to advocate for them and kids who don't. But I-
And our process should be, yes.
I trust that you addressed it, and, so, I don't want to be the dead swan-
But I agree with you, so, students need to come to school on time. Was, uh, Mrs. Grant's question similar?
It's a little bit different.
Okay.
Please state, uh, on my behalf, I received a call last week on late busing, I spoke to Assistant Superintendent Ramsey, and she stated, first student confirmed it was a golf student. My concern is, we should be finding out from the schools, not the parents. Besides, absence and tardies, we need to, we need a reporting from the schools on bus late. It is disruption, it is a disruption to the classes and affects student learning. I actually spoke to Kim personally, but walking in just to get clarification of what she says, and I actually agree with something that she stated, I don't know if we have it. Why would we mark a student late or tardy or absent when it's our own bus's fault? Why don't we have a third column that says, that's the bus fault? And, uh, that's Kim's, uh, issue, and I, I actually agree with that, why don't we have a, we, we didn't provide, we didn't get the student here on time because of our busing?
Correct, so that's students, uh, tardy should be overturned at the main office.
Oh, good.
So, they may be marked a web absence, uh, by the teacher, but upon arrival, uh, or W, coded W or T by the teacher, but that, if it's a bus issue, you usually are admitted without consequence, and the main office will flip that over to, um, a non-issue.
Does, is there a way of it, is it slipping through the cracks, though? It, it is, because if they go right to their classroom-
That is a matter of practice.
Okay.
Can I say that it's a hundred percent no? Can I say that any of our matters of practice should be tightened up? Absolutely, so we can absolutely reiterate, but students should not be penalized for when a bus is transporting them to their school and our buses are late.
Okay.
But I do, I do feel it needs to be documented somewhere, right, because if it's not, if we're not documenting that the kid is tardy, whether it's the bus, bus's fault or their own, then nobody's gonna catch it, I mean.
I would have to check with-
Do you know what I'm trying to say? If they're, if they're not marking them tardy, then who's tracking that?
Hold that thought.
Do you know what I'm trying to say?
But no, I don't want it to count against the, we do it. Lynn, you want to talk to that?
Good evening, so, I, I can tell you that what we do in the Transportation Office is that if we know a bus is late, we keep it in a spreadsheet every time we're told that a bus is late, we document who told us, what bus it was, if we know what time they arrived, and once it happens again, we mark down that that's a duplicate, like, it's a duplicate issue, so if there may be a bus that was late one time, it may be on the sheet one time, we don't delete anything, we have a column that we ask for a student to comment for us, and sometimes they may see, say, there was a flat tire, the bus was late, um, in a case like that, they should also be sending out an email that goes out to an email group that includes all administrators, and then in schools, the secretary, our, what we do for, just our process, is that in the subject line, they put only the schools that are involved, that way everyone gets notified, but if I don't see my school in the subject, I know it's not something critical that I need to open right now, we document it if we find out that they're late, and then every Tuesday, we have a meeting with first student management, and we go through that issue sheet, even if it's something that's been resolved, if we see it's happening again, we want to know why, it's a repeated issue. So, we document that if we know it's late. So, we do count on the schools letting us know, families often let us know as well, and we do document that, um, as well, every time someone does let us know, but we do count on the schools letting us know so that we can track and see if there is a pattern, find out why, and get that remedied.
I was gonna ask that, is it the, do you usually only hear from the parents, or does this, is this, is someone at the school supposed to call you if a bus is, if a bus is late, to let you know that, so you can track it?
I would hope that it would, the school would always, also, always be letting us know, but we do often hear from the, a parent or the student themselves, will often call the Transportation Office and say, you know, my bus isn't here yet, and we can get on, we can track it and say where it is, and, and make sure that it's on its way to get to them. Um, like I said, we document it so that we can follow and see what's happening, and then if there is a change that's made, we want to see if that's going to have a positive impact on them. As you mentioned, we are always having a change in who's riding the bus, and the biggest impact for us is when we get a child who may be placed in a school that is not their community school, because then a bus needs to go kind of off route to go and get that child and get them there. So, there are times, especially if there are new assignments like that, that it might take them a little bit of time to kind of get everything working as effectively as possible.
Understood, and not too much.
No, that was statewide, yeah. But again, once we know about it, you know, if we know about it, we can do something about it. Mrs. Ramsey's just pointing to this, so, she just wanted me to mention the fact that we were having some issues with some buses being late, and so probably about two weeks ago, um, we had first student kind of go through and give us, they, they did a pretty significant rerouting of a lot of the buses, and we got that out to families, tried to get that information out to the schools and to the families, um, we send emails, we call if they don't have an email, we also have, the drivers are really good because they know the kids and families, and they'll say, hey, starting Monday, this is a change that they might have, so if it's something that we know about and planned like that, we know, and then, of course, the first day of that plan, when you expect everything to be great, it's always that little bit of a hiccup, well, everyone gets used to it, um, but we've noticed some real improvement since then. Right now, we've really only heard about one bus in the last couple of days that has gotten to school a little bit late, um, and that was due to a, um, a medical issue with the driver who's out, and they had to put a different driver in, so they were trying to get back on, on track with that.
Mr. Chavino?
No, I was just, so, specific to the statewide issue that was brought up, if the child's been late every day of the school year up until last week, how did we not know about that? Is that a reporting problem from the school to the office? And so have we, have we gotten with all our principals now on the importance of reporting late busing?
So, it was a reporting issue from the school to us, because it was a statewide issue, and it will be, again, reiterated with them, uh, again, reiterated with all administrators and all assistant administrators and clerks, that they need to report to us when they have buses late, we have the procedure set in place, and I think that maybe it didn't happen because it was a statewide issue, and they report our first student buses, but any student at any time that's being late for school, it needs to be reported.
Good. Ms. Benolo?
So, you and I had a conversation about this last week, so we also have a home, homeless population, the McKinney-Vento kids, and a lot of times, they move from one place to another, and it's taking statewide, um, or ride, three, four days or more to actually get them, um, in the transportation loop to get them back to our schools. So, they may be out of school four times, uh, four days in a row, if they have to move again in the following month, the same thing is happening, so, we have a lot of students that are having a lot of absences, so, one, it's not fair to the kid, um, so, there's something that statewide needs to work on with that. The other thing is, ride and, and our status with them, they look at those absences as unexcused absences, so, there's got to be a way that, um, our schools are not penalized for this.
That, that comes with the coding, and that's actually why I turned to look at Hersh at one point, to see if there's a coding, we have a very limited number of ride-approved codes in our Skyward application, so, did he come over and tell you anything?
He did. So, so one of the things that we can do is we can add a code, um, we, the one thing that we're cautious of when buses are late is that, on a report card, let's say, it's going to, it may reflect something like excused absences, unexcused, or excused tardies, unexcused, and even though these are excused, we don't want it reflecting on that child's record if it's the bus that's making them late, because still, when they've got a report card that says fifty-two tardies, even if they say excused, wherever they're going next is going to look at that, and that's still going to have an impact on, on that student. Um, so, we were having a discussion about, is there another code that we could put in that would not report to Ride as the child being tardy or absent, and would not reflect on their report card, that's a way that we can determine that it was because of, of the buses, if that's something that we could do. We do run reports right out of Skyward that we know who is on which bus, so if bus seventeen was late, we can, it's very easy to run a report and know that impacted X number of, of, of children that day.
So, this is not just being late, this is just being absent, and they're missing a lot of time, and because they're homeless, they're moving from, they may be in a hotel, they're told to leave that hotel, they have to find a new one, so, by the time statewide catches up with them, they could actually lose a week of school.
So, looking at that, it's reporting that as an excused absence?
But we're not yet.
Do you want to speak to that?
We're not.
It's all the same issue, they're all homeless, right, and, and so- It's the same issue as the foster kids, and they too, you know, it takes a little while for the two cities and towns to get together and figure out money, and who's gonna pay, and, and, you know, those kids sit at home sometimes if they're, you know, far away, but-
So, in all honesty, I think I'd like a little time to do a little bit more research with regard to the ride coding, because I don't want to misrepresent any, um, any student demographic or student attendance data, so if I can have a little time and I can report back to the clerk what I find out, and I'll let you know how we're able to, to change that, I don't want to say, I, I think that we can add another code in, um, but, and we can certainly say that those absences are excused, but we need to differentiate between what's going on so we can wrap around the appropriate services, so if I can just have a little time to do a little bit more research in that regard.
The McKinney-Vento kids, um, if they're losing gaps of weeks at a time-
So, I do know that-
What are we doing for educational loss?
Well, they do, the schools do wrap around services at that point, and they do do the remediation and the ramp up and the, and the help at that point, and oftentimes, they're very involved students, so they have the opportunity to get the additional support. I know that there was a meeting with statewide with regard specifically to McKinney-Vento just this week, I wasn't at that meeting, um, but I did know that statewide busing was a hot topic at that point, so I don't think it's just Batuket that's having that, um, issue, as Marsha has, sorry, Ms. Fernandez has said, uh, so I do believe it's something they're very much working on, and they're very much aware, but I do want to do a little bit more, I don't want to misspeak to you all tonight.
Any other conversation on busing?
We can, we can talk about that, there was a huge discussion this week about DCYF and, and statewide busing that I was part of, so, I won't take up your time now, but we, we can talk about some of the changes that we talked about, but by rights, DCYF workers are mandated to transport until busing is put in place.
Two?
Well, no, because they don't have a, they don't have a DCYF worker.
Okay.
Much, thank you, thank you very much. May I please have a motion for the school committee recess to executive session in accordance with provisions under Rhode Island's general law forty-two dash forty-six dash five A three for the purpose of discussion acting upon review of district emergency operation plans, to have a motion. So moved by Mr. Chavino, seconded by Ms. Benolo. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We're in recess for executive session. All right, clerk, can, uh, we, I'd like to re, reconvene into open session, clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Benolo?
Here.
Mr. Chavino?
Yeah.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yeah.
Mr. Shalow?
Yeah, clerk, can you report out any votes taken in executive session, uh, of tonight's meeting?
The committee voted unanimously to seal the executive session minutes and to adjourn the executive session.
Can I have a mo, thank you, can I have a motion to, for adjournment?
No.
By adjourned by Ms. Benolo, seconded by Ms. Fernandez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? We're adjourned, thank you all very much for tonight.